Everybody have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. Councilmember Ryan's can lead the invocation.
I can bow your head with it. Our heavenly Father, we just come to you today for your guidance and direction. Thank you so much for many, many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We ask you to help us to make good, sound, sensitive decisions today, dear Lord, and decisions taken into heart of our wonderful city. We ask you blessed to speak in the name of our body and as to your service.
If you'll go ahead and get your food, then we'll get started.
I like this tie, look at you.
I had painted that the other night.
You believe in it?
With this tie, you ought to have on a pair of boots, but I'm believing.
I thought you were gonna say the boots at the end of the day were starting to stink.
Well, that too.
What's happening, man?
This is a redosis, is it? Is this redosis?
Margarita.
Margarita.
Guys, don't eat too much.
You don't like food or something?
Oh, I've already eaten. I can taste the chicken. So, I'll take a plate and go. Take a plate and go. Relatives like that, very big, very huge. They show up by the family.
You better get your food now.
And you can't see in the email, you know, don't be stupid.
Today's your day.
That's good or bad?
That's it. That's absolutely right.
I do too, I love those. I just love those.
You know, apparently they have a ton of things.
Yeah, bring that, did I bring that to try?
Did you? Or did you get rid of them?
I didn't date them.
You did, so you took some more.
Yes, I do have them.
No, I want to get rid of some. I've gotta get rid of mine. Cause I've dated them.
No, I didn't date them.
See, you're smart.
I didn't date them, I just put them back in the box, they came in, you know, the ones I had, it just would've been like stories.
I don't know, but that's smart, but I said I was two and done. And mine was provoked for a conversation too. Rash had all those huge hours.
I don't think it was from January, it was.
Her tenure as council member. Ah, okay, because I just thought, because I could've sworn it was from here, because.
But it may, I'm thinking it was for.
Now, they were working on.
Oh yeah, I think it was eight years.
Cause I used.
Same period.
Cause I thought this woman must have, she just must have been there.
I ate earlier. I brought some chicken. From Chicken Express.
I was thinking chicken for you. This one, it's either the taking of Chick-fil-A and.
Oh no, what month to a pot of lobster?
I was wondering what he was gonna do.
That spicy salad thing that goes the fifth salad. And you go to chicks, just out to that? I mean, there's a lot of chicken places in this town.
I saw mixed, remember he said it wasn't a done deal, and they said it was done?
Yeah, they've announced they're doing it, and he said, because they're doing it, but it's not. I was curious, I was telling Malcolm, because you know, John Bishman doesn't, he didn't hang on to things that don't work, you know, if he can't make them work. And so, I was not surprised that he was gonna sell it.
Okay, the reds are creating? But it sure does not show the emblem as well.
Well, I can't think it's a red. It looks like hot cherry. I saw Malcolm, he looked like a hot cherry.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's already showing on his.
Hey Paul, you wanna step out for a second? Wanna airlock real quick?
Hot cherry Hamilton.
You think you take these out there, huh?
Get the best sign of your choice and take it with you.
Find the yardstick somewhere at home, man.
Well, I have about a hundred, do you need them?
I've got some too.
Jack told me, it was time for me to clear the mouth of his shop.
That's funny, where is your shop? Need a one there.
We use some of them for target practice?
That's a good idea.
I think there's many people that have.
Outside the city limits, correct?
Of course.
Honey, hold it up a little.
Yeah, he wasn't making you hold it, was he?
Pardon me? Oh yeah. I said just aim for the Detra.
Is that gunshots?
I'm with you. It's a couple rounds though, on Saturday night. The dogs were barking and the cars were freaking out. My husband woke up and I said, "Did you hear all that?" And he's like, "Yeah, it's just dogs barking." Go act asleep, I'm like, dude, that's guns.
A couple of my neighbors got their car windows shot out, one being Manny with Building Services.
Here this past New Year's, I heard, I don't know if y'all heard, but I heard automatic weapons. Heavy caliber.
Two different rounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that.
You run out of BBs.
You can't see.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started, that way we make sure we get it all taken care of. We have the invocation, Pastor James O'Crory, First Baptist, Councilmember Willis is doing the pledges. Do you have any proclamations, awards, none? Anything on the consent agenda?
Mayor, the pastor can't make it since we switched times, so if.
We do have a couple of public hearings. One's zoning and the one's a rezone. And under other, we have the seal coat we talked about the other night. And then the abandonment of thirty-fourth. Came in the pavement rejuvenation. Industrial district with Flying J. Is that the new one, or do you?
That's a new one on the northwest. They finally bought them off.
Coming highly.
Yes.
So, we have an industrial district, do we still get sales tax?
They'll.
The other ones will be an annexed one?
There's not sales tax, but we get the payment in lieu of taxes. But they've already requested annexation, that'll be coming up on the future. The industrial districts just to get them the water and sewer a little fresh.
Oh, well, because I know, technically in the county, sales tax is six and a quarter. Make sure that they're paying eight and a quarter and that that goes in the sewer.
Well, once we annex it, then they'll be subject to the city sales tax. But in the industrial district, it's not. No, that's a state law. But it'll just be a matter of months before we can actually.
Is it subject now to the new tax that the county passed? To make it eight and a quarter?
It should, you're right, it should be like any other law.
So, right now, there is that tax, the county will get it, if it's after it's annexed in, then it switches to city.
Switches to city sales tax. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have the lease on the Ector. And then we have the miscellaneous appointments, are there any appointments?
Still haven't gotten anything.
David, you know, Michael, let me just one question on the industrial. We look at the industrial agreement. And that is for the purpose of.
Property tax.
But, I mean, property tax, I understand that, but are there other things that, will we run water and sewer to them?
There's, they're gonna, their interest is getting water and sewer, and that's my understanding of why they wanted to do the industrial district first. Because the planning can go forward with all of that now, even though we're gonna start the annexation process, oh, we may start the annexation process soon, you have the, there's a workshop next Tuesday where we'll talk about annexation. Right. And also have their request annexation, we have three industrial districts that have asked to be voluntarily annexed. So, I'll ask you to consider starting that annexation process.
I guess my question would be this, if we're gonna run water and sewer water to them, what will we go ahead and annex with?
We will.
But I mean, what if they back off?
Well, no, they've actually.
I mean, you've got, will our agreement say it's sure? You will be, okay.
We have a signed and notarized request from the owner's representative asking for annexation and the creation of an industrial district in the interim.
In this case, the industrial district allows us to do a couple of things that they do rather than, and that is to begin the process of getting water and sewer to the facility. And allow them to collect feeable taxes whenever they want.
So, as these new industrial developments are created, do they have to comply with city codes? Cause I felt one of the reasons people wanted these industrial developments was because they didn't have to apply, they didn't have to comply with all the codes. So, if they're doing that, so they don't have to comply with codes, but they're doing it because they do want to get city and water, that seems not right.
That's, I think, part of the discussion we can have as, in the workshop about annexation. Because you're right, there is, there's some misunderstandings or confusions about that. And so, the council needs to discuss that and clarify what you want the policy going forward to be. Rather than us talking about what it's being, it really needs to be, what do you want it to be in industrial districts and in the city moving forward?
Well, otherwise, why would you want to be in an industrial? What's the benefit to an industrial district normally? I mean, you said these people, because they get city and water, city water and sewer faster. But a lot of, when we did that other annexation, everybody was very clear that there was not a specific time when there was gonna be city and water, city and sewer, city water and sewer. I just kinda can't get that out right.
Well, the main benefit, originally the idea behind an industrial district was, the city was considering annexing a parcel of land outside of the city. And the owner said, "Well, wait a minute, we might want some city services, we might want water and sewer, we might want garbage, or we might not." But gee, we don't want to be annexed. And so, an industrial district primarily is the code. Originally, the code didn't pay taxes, but they're gonna pay a fee. So, an industrial district is an agreement whereby the city says, "Okay, we're gonna create you as an industrial district of the city. We're not gonna annex you, we agree not to annex you for the term of the industrial district contract." Usually seven years, but it's negotiable, can be less. And in return, for the city not annexing you. And originally, you're not in the city, so you don't have to comply with any city rules and regulations. You're gonna pay us a fee in lieu of taxes, which is equal to what your property taxes will be. Now, that's the basic definition. Now, Odessa through the years might have one or two agreements where the payment in lieu of taxes is actually not exactly the, it was just a specialized deal. But the norm is. And then as the years went by, each time there was a new industrial district created, the city council started wanting to enforce some regulations. Health and safety, well, even though you're not in the city, you should comply with basic health and safety, fire code, things like that. And so, there's, they're not all the same, all the industrial districts that are out there. The city has been increasingly trying to say, "Well, we won't annex you, but you're gonna pay us a fee that's the same as what the taxes will be, and you're gonna have to comply with nearly all of our development regulations, except maybe not all of them." And that's where it's gotten really complicated. And I'm, I would like to suggest to you that maybe you don't make it that complicated. You just, you either annex them or you don't.
I mean, it seems like since you grandfathered everybody in on that last annexation, they didn't have to come, they didn't have to get up to speed on city codes or anything unless they added a new, something new on. It seems like there's the potential, I'm not saying it is, cause I don't know, I'm really asking the question, but it seems like there's the potential for someone to want to build whatever they want to build, but doesn't have to comply with anything, but still us give them water and sewer.
Yes, ma'am.
And then when we annex them, their grandfather did.
That's the limit. The staff thinks that that's maybe not a good idea, but the council exercising the political authority you have makes that final decision. And we, there's, it's not uniform. There's been different councils that have created different industrial districts.
And I don't think I understand enough if it costs, if we set that, I mean, I don't know if people in industrial districts say, "We have to do this because it costs so much to build a building and be in compliance with the city." I mean, is that a legitimate argument?
Can I say one thing, excuse me? One little difference, you know, some of those that we annexed in before that had been in operation for so long, and no, they would not meet city codes. This specific one with Flying J, would that be in a corporate thing? Well, the odds are, they've got established plans, so their electrical will be in conduit, I can't say that it will. But also, their pubs and their tanks will have to meet TCUQ. And TCUQ, TCUQ is what the city would inspect by two. I mean, they would have a TCUQ person there, but you know, as far as technicality, that their lines don't leak, and that they are, they meet the standards and the state standard is gonna be. So, like for this specific one, I'm not too concerned, but I agree with exactly what you're saying. Some of them that are existing, and then they've come in and they've asked for, and they receive annexation, those are the ones that concern me.
Well, even the existing ones, I get, as much as, as we have new industrial districts, it seems to me that they should have to be more compliant. I get that ones that have been there for all these years, but.
I can tell you that the discussions I had last year with the older, some of the original, the owners were nearly all saying that if we build something brand new, if we add a new building, well, we're gonna build it to code, because we want to be safe and all that. But their concern was, we have this, these facilities in place, which to retrofit would really, just seems to be prohibitive, and so they don't want to do that. I didn't, I didn't have anyone really telling me, "Well, if we build a new thing, we don't want to comply with basic codes, we just don't want to have to go back and redo it."
Okay. All righty, anything else on the.
Flying J is the only person in this agreement? This is the only business in this agreement?
On this industrial district is the Flying J industrial.
And I agree with you.
We're gonna have a follow-up out on Tuesday of next week where we get Flying J's request for annexation, but also two other small industrial districts request for annexation.
Who was the contact person with this Flying J?
This was in negotiation when I got here, and both utilities, legal, and manager's office. Really, everybody's been involved.
You don't know that, Michael?
No, outside my head, no sir.
The contact person is a man named Lance, I can't remember his last name.
Okay, all righty, anything else? Any more appointments aboard or anything? Okay, then we will move to Safe to Save.
Council, we have a presentation for you this afternoon from Safe to Save. Some of the members of the council prior to the new ones coming on board. And remember, we had a presentation from Safe to Save about a year and a half ago. Safe to Save is an app that encourages people not to text and drive, that encourages driver safety. Ms. Williams is here today on behalf of Safe to Save. They've come to us and they've asked us to partner with them to get the message out about driver safety and distracted driving. So, at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Williams and let her make the presentation. I do, yes, ma'am.
Thank you all so much for letting me. I'll be quick, cause I know you guys are busy, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, Michael and Philip, for arranging this, we really appreciate it. Before I get started, who in here has heard of Safe to Save? Great, do you have the app on your phone? You don't anymore? Okay. Anyone else have it and actively use it? Well, so, most of you sound like you know what it is, so I'll kind of skim through it. But the purpose of today is just to kind of review Safe to Save and what it is and why it's important, especially in our community, and then propose how we can get the city of Odessa involved with Safe to Save, and I'll get into that. So, it was funny, on my way here, I live in Midland, and I was actually on Highway eighty, and I saw a really awful crash. And I thought, "How ironic, I'm going to speak about Safe to Save, and I see this crash." It's just a huge problem in our area, especially in the Permian Basin, as you can see. The Permian Basin consists of 1.4% of the Texas population, and 2% of the crashes that happen in Texas are in the Permian Basin. It doesn't, I mean, you drive around and you see crashes happening constantly. Granted, not all of them probably are happening due to distracted driving, but a lot of them are. Anytime I'm driving on the highway, I see someone on their phones swerving on the road, I mean, it happens all the time. One in five crashes in Texas involves distracted driving. It truly is an epidemic. So, what Safe to Save came up with is, we realized that, you know, having a law and trying to enforce it to people who not text and drive isn't necessarily working. So, the idea behind Safe to Save is, how do we get people to actually do this? And the way is to reward people. And so, with Safe to Save, you are rewarding people for not messing with their phones while they're behind the wheel. And with the points that they're earning on their app, that is then turned in, you can use it at local businesses and restaurants to, you know, for free things or discounted items. And so, people like to earn rewards, and that seems to be working a lot better than just enforcing it by law. So, most of you said you have the app, or you've seen it, you know what it looks like. But this is actually a picture of myself with my husband and two dogs. But when you download the app, you upload a picture of your loved ones, and it's there to remind you it's not worth it. Here is showing like how many apps that you earn as you're driving. And then here is the list of the participating businesses in the area. So, we have businesses in Odessa and Midland that are on the app that offer rewards. And they're really great at rewards as well. You can still take phone calls through your Bluetooth on your car, and you can still use Apple and Google Maps, which is great, while you're using your Safe to Save app. Here are just a few logos of some of our participating businesses. So, this is, you know, we're in Houston, College Station, San Antonio, in the Permian Basin, and we are also growing and continuing to grow in the Dallas market and Austin. But some of these people who like kick quick, they're local, they're a really great business partner of ours. And we also have a place where you can suggest a business. So, if there's a business that you would like to see on the app, and we're not, and it's not on the app, we'd love to hear from you guys. We have a sales team that actually reaches out and sets people up on the app. So, if you ever want to suggest someone, we would love to hear from you. So, the user base for Safe to Save is made up of, of course, businesses, and then we work with colleges and universities, schools, governments, the news, transportation and safety companies. So, you kind of see, this is kind of who our partners are and who we work with. So, safe driving competitions, what that looks like is, particularly in schools, we're doing a big push in April for National Distracted Driving Month. And we've worked with a lot of schools that are going to push a competition. It's about a four-week period, and what it is, is we encourage students, if they're of driving age, parents and teachers to get on the app, and then they have a special code for their school, and then they are entered into the competition. And basically, it's a fun way to get people engaged and compete for as many points as you can earn during that period of time. And then we give prizes at the end of the competition. It's very easy to do, so once you're in the app, you'll see in the bottom right-hand corner of the little trophy symbol, that's how you find the competition. And then if there's a special code, you would enter it in there, and then you would automatically be put into that competition. And you can see everyone else that has joined as well. So, we are proposing do a citywide competition. And what that looks like is partnering with the city of Odessa, the fire, the fire station, the police station, you know, just different groups, and where we are basically communicating and getting the word out to anyone that lives in the city of Odessa, any kind of groups, that you can join an actual open competition for the city of Odessa. There wouldn't be a code, just to make it a little more simple. But this particular competition would be eight weeks long. And we have an amazing title sponsor, which is Subaru of Midland, Odessa. They have set aside $8,000 if we do a citywide competition. They have set aside $8,000 if we do a citywide competition. And so I'll kind of get into that in a second as far as the prizes. So a couple of options of how we could do this. Option one would be the most ideal. We think it would carry the most momentum, but what we think would be best is during that eight-week period, we would randomly draw a winner each week, and each winner would then win $1,000. And that way, it just keeps the momentum going. So it's just drawn at random, and anyone would have a chance to win that entered into the competition. A second option would be have a first, second, and third-place winner, where we would break up the amounts, and this would be based off of how many points that they would have achieved during that time, and this would be done at the conclusion of the competition. And then the third option could be a combination, where we would have eight $500 winners drawn at random, and then we would have a first and second-place winner. But again, we think option one would have the most response, and a lot of people would participate. So how we can raise awareness is doing this by engaging with the press, you know, utilizing public service announcements, doing a kickoff event with the city of Odessa, something that would be really cool to invite the public. We could get Subaru involved. Obviously, we would be involved, getting maybe UTPD or Odessa College involved, and then, of course, encouraging local businesses to get on the app as well. So we think that as a group, as, you know, all, as all of us work together, we really can make a difference and create awareness, especially in the Permian Basin, and therefore create safer roads. So that's the end of my, my presentation. What questions do you guys have about Save to Save, how it works, what an Odessa citywide competition would look like?
I, I don't know if I missed it or not, but you guys do plan on going into the schools and talking to the kids, addressing the kids?
Yes, so we've actually done quite a bit of work at MISD. We haven't had as much luck with Ector County ISD, but, you know, if you guys can help us get into the schools, we would love that. So any school can do a competition. It just, basically, we have to get permission from the principal to be able to do that. Like I said, we are doing a lot in April for National Distracted Driving Month, just because we think that's a great time to do it, plus school's going to be out soon. But yes, I mean, we would love to have Odessa schools be part of this as well.
Is there any special color you guys are wearing for this awareness, Ma?
You know, that's a great question. I don't know if there is a special color associated with National Distracted Driving Month.
Think all the colors are taken.
But same say, colors are blue.
Yeah, all the colors are taken.
So...
And what we discussed with Ms. Williams was to allow them, for example, access, if they want to have an event at a park, they need access to our place system or our stage. This is an issue, obviously, that's important to us as a community simply because of the number of accidents that are associated with distracted driving. So we thought that this was a great partnership. They can certainly have access to our facilities. I think this is certainly something that the city could endorse, never go wrong with public safety. I know from our police department's perspective and fire perspective, those guys are all on board because they see the effects of distracted driving. So I think from our perspective, this is a good partnership for us to be involved in.
So, okay. I'm slow. You download the app, and then how does it, does it prevent you from getting texts while you're driving?
No, you, you can still get text messages. It's just that if you pick up your phone while you're driving, it's going to turn red. It's going to pop up and tell you to put your phone down and not mess with it, and you will stop earning points at that time. Now, once you put your phone back down and you resume, you know, driving and you're not touching it, then it just continues to earn your points.
That's easy.
And so what about, what about the motion movement of the vehicle? You know, let's say the up and down?
It, that doesn't bother you. It's when you take it up and you're messing with it, it notices. Because I put it in my cup holder, you know, or my seat, and it, it doesn't, it doesn't give me an alert, so. And it actually works as a passenger, so I went to Dallas this past weekend while I was the passenger as my husband drove, and if I was messing with my phone, it kept popping up because it thought I was driving, even though I wasn't. But you can still earn points as a passenger.
Can you deactivate it and let it know you're not driving?
Uh, no. The way it works is you, when you set it up, like when you download it and you put your settings on, it basically has it set where it, it detects that motion. When you start going 10 miles an hour faster, it automatically comes on, and that's when it starts earning the points, so...
So what if I, what if, let's say I was a participant and I wanted to earn these points, and I wasn't driving that day? I'm just a passenger, and I just want to scroll through my phone or play with my phone. Is it not going to dock me for being a passenger?
You never actually lose points, you never actually, like, have points taken out of your account. It's more as you just stop earning them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
It just kind of like freezes.
So I'm not going to earn points even though I'm, well, you guys are rewarding the driver, not necessarily the passenger anyway, right?
Right. I mean, the intention behind it is that we're rewarding people for not being on their phones while they're in motion.
And it really does get your attention. I had to disay for mine. But I'm going back to it.
Very cheat codes. Very cheat code like video games. Cheat code, I'm joking.
All right. Any other questions?
I like it. Very nice.
That's good. Great. We hope that we can be able to work with you all. If you have any questions, this is actually the owner and founder. She's from Midland originally, but that's her contact information, and Michael, of course, has our contact information. So, thank you again for your time. We hope to be working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, next item forward, neighborhood sweeps block party updates. The one and only Ms. Darlene.
But that's all right, because I'm, I'm here to quickly study.
Mayor, council, before Darlene and Marita start speaking, I want to kind of set this up and visit with the council about something that we changed last year as it related to Coast of Cody, for, and we've got 14 officers in there, 14 code officers, and I don't need to tell this group that code issues still continue. This is an everyday, never-ending battle for us. There's always a code problem in everyone's neighborhood. We decided that one of the things that we were missing was the education element, right? Because we can issue, and we issued about 27,000 notices of violation a year, and that makes an impact. Most of the time, we do get those, those items corrected, the violation corrected, but we recognize there was an item missing, and that was really this consistent message to the public about what a code violation is, what are the implications of that, and how, more importantly, folks can take pride in their own neighborhood. So as a result of that, we created a position and took advantage of Mrs. Bay's talents, and she's been phenomenal. I can't even begin to tell you how, how great she's been in the position. But our, 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 our tack now is to provide more education. Along with that, there are a number of other things that we're doing, one of which we'll talk about today, I'm sure, but is we're having these block parties in everyone's district, right? The purpose is to bring out the community, get them engaged, get them aware of what code enforcement is, and at the same time, hopefully impart to them the importance of taking pride in their neighborhood, in their neighborhood. But we're taking advantage of that because we're also inviting several other city departments to join us. You know, we've got our solid waste folks out there, we've got our fire and PD folks, we've got various other departments that over time will join us. So it's a good, a good opportunity for us to recruit some employees to the city of Odessa, provide information on not just code enforcement, but the information on the fire department or other programs the community development department may have. We've got outside partners that are also joining us, so it's just a good, a good atmosphere. It's a great family event, and these, this first one was about 350 people. We anticipate our next one, which Darlene will talk about, to be hopefully double that. So we think that these things will continue to grow. We've got a really great response from the public, but I'm going to be quiet, and I'm going to let Darlene kind of talk about it, and she's going to walk us through what we're trying to do.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Miss Bayes.
We are so excited about being here and being able to present to you. We thank you for affording us this opportunity. We have Marita Sandoval, our director, here as well. So she's going to pick up where I leave off in case I forget some things. Michael have already given you really the gist of the program, so I'm not going to hold you too long. Basically, as Michael said, this initiative was implemented in September of 2018. We had our first block party on January the 26th, and we had it at Ector County Coliseum at Boyn G. We had over 300-plus to show up for it. We weren't expecting that many, but they kept coming, and they kept coming, and they kept coming. And we were wondering if we were going to have enough food for everybody, but lo and behold, our top chefs, the police department, they made a way out of nowhere, and they provided food. We fixed over 600 hot dogs there at the event, along with the cookies and the popcorn and the, uh, not the popcorn, the cotton candy. And we had council, we had council members there, and we had the county judge that was there, and Michael and Philip was there, and, and they just kept coming, and they just kept coming. And we had, uh, we had a wonderful time there. Our block parties is to thank our citizens for taking pride in their neighborhood. We want them to have a new flavor, a new attitude. We want them to know that we are here to serve them, that, and we also want to educate them by letting them know that the city has free services that we can provide with them that can assist with them on a daily basis. We want a new attitude with our citizens throughout our community. We are having quarterly sweeps in all of the council districts. We started in October, and the rain, we need the rain. And you know, if Odessa just smell rain, the weeds start growing 12 inches or above. But in October, we got flooded out, but it didn't, it didn't stop us from doing what we needed to do, because solid waste, street department chipped in, and, and our code officers, and we still went through the alleys of South Odessa, and we removed so much tonnage from South Odessa, and the day that we were having the block party, we got flooded out. We were already set up. We were there at seven that morning, even in the rain, because we're serious about this thing. We're serious about making a difference in our community. And so we had to tell people, "No, we can't do it here. It's raining bad," and they were willing to still go out. But in January, we had it at the Coliseum, and that week that we were in the neighborhood, we were at 31st to 42nd and from Andrews Highway to Golda. In one week, we moved, we removed 17.8 tons of debris from our alley. Now, just think if it had have been done the whole month. And we don't just go in there and just move junk and debris, but we do what's called a comprehensive sweep, from property line to property line to middleways of the alley. If the alley need blading, we're turning it in to the street department. If some lights are out, we're turning it in to Encore. If there's a gas smell, we going to turn it in to Atmos. We going to call all the troops in, because we're in it all together. We don't want a car. And we're going to make sure that that property owner is going to mow not just the front of their property, but they're going to mow behind their fence line. I bet y'all didn't know that, that it's, it's a responsibility of the property line, property owner to take care of property line to property line behind their fence as well to middleways of the alley. Yeah, we, we require all of that. But our educational program is to help eliminate the blight that's in our area, to have free, litter-free neighborhoods. We're there just to make a difference in our community, and we just don't ask them to do it. We get involved. We get our hands dirty. We pick up old mattresses from the alley. We always say that January is our mattress month because that's income tax month, but January, February, March, all the way through December, because we're finding all of these things illegally dumped in our alley. And we educate the citizens to let them know, they don't just have to go to the landfill, but they can go to HHW Monday through Friday, including Saturday, and dispose of these items free of charge. Many of them don't know about that. We have junk vehicles that's on properties, that we have free services, that if they have the title and they want to get rid of that vehicle, they can sign a waiver, and we'll get it off there. The city doesn't make any money off of it. The record service picks it up and crush it. We letting them know that if there's an unsafe structure in there, they don't have to just sit next to that. They can call us, and if it's residential and we have the money and we depend on Marita to let us know whether we got the money, we will remove that structure residential only. Let me stress that. Free of charge, as long as we have the CDBG funds available, but if it's commercial, then they got to pay for it. They got to pay to get that taken care of. We also let them know that, I talked, and we have a lawn mowing program for the elderly and the disabled. These are a few services that we have that are free of charge to the citizens that we educate them on as well as the codes and the ordinances that we have in place. As I spoke of, we had the January block party. Now, we have additional block parties that's coming up. April the 27th, and you have an invitation there, it's going to be in District Four. Councilman Sprawl, and, and we're looking for everybody to show up that can show up. On April the 7th, code enforcement officers will walk door to door and hand out over 600 invitations, along with, we're giving them an opportunity to place things in the alley free of charge. We come through and pick it up. On Sep, on April the 15th, solid waste will go through the alleys. They will collect all of the debris that has been placed in the alley, and then, once they do that, code enforcement will do a follow-up inspection. Anybody that did not do spring cleaning during that time, sorry, they out of luck. We issue notices of violation if it's still on their property. And to reward everyone, to thank the citizens, we're having this big block party where we really party. We know how to party. We have a DJ, DJ Hembone, which is the corporal over at the police department, and when I talk about getting down, he can get down, he can dance, he can party, he can draw the crowd in. We have jumpers, we have the balloon makers, we have, uh...
The dance team.
The dance team, we have dance challenge, we have mascot. And guess what? I'm glad you asked. Atmos stepped up to the plate, and Atmos said, "We want to sponsor the food. We want to provide the food. We're expecting anywhere from 700 to 800 people to flood Lundell Park. It's free. Everything is free of charge." And not only that, that day, we will be, we'll have the crusher trucks, solid waste crusher trucks, that if people have debris, if they have old furniture that they want to dispose of, they can bring it out there to the event as well. Now, let me assure you that we've already talked with our city manager, we've already talked with our assistant city manager. At 11:45, if you're not in line to dispose of your items, we're going to direct you to HHW, because the line could grow and it gets longer and longer. The county has opted in, they want to come in because the alley that we're working, we're working 86 to 93rd, Andrews Highway to East Harbor. Well, 86 Alley backs up to the county, North Ranchito. So we're talking to the county judge about bringing them in and seeing what kind of assistance that we can get from the county so that they can be a part of this cleanup. Because what we don't want to do is clean up, and then our alley end up with a lot of junk and debris again. So we're getting the county to buy into it. We have departments from the city that's coming in to showcase their department and do a little recruiting along the way. That many people in the park, you might as well be able to get somebody, even if it's not but one, to come in there and come and join our great organization, our city. Also, on Saturday, save the date. Go ahead on and mark your calendar.
This Saturday?
No, not this Saturday. I'm going to give you the day. Saturday, July the 20th. Saturday, July, July the 20th. We will be in District Five, and that's councilperson Willis. I still want to call us five-ing, I know she's five-ing, but I have to think about it. Councilwoman Willis, that's going to be in her District, District Five. It's going to be even greater. It's a back-to-school bash that we're doing. We're looking, we can't ask...
What's the date again?
July the 20th. All of the events will be from 9:00 AM to noon. All this information is on the paper that I get, that we gave you. It's going to be on Clement Street. We will get all this information to Norma. She'll get it out to you. I know my time is limited. And Saturday, October the 12th, we'll be in District Two, where is Councilman Bryant. He's already holidayed.
Amen.
He already said, "I'm ready. I'm going to meet with him." And that's going to be off the Billy Hex Road area. We will give you the location. We're looking at the Grace Baptist Church or the Crossroads. We're looking at that. On the July the 20th, I felt to tell you that we're going to be at the Bethlehem Baptist Church parking lot, and we're going to be talking with Medical Center Hospital, Medical Center Clinic as well. We want everyone to... We want everyone to join in. We want to be on One a Card. We want to make a difference in our neighborhood. And our theme is take pride in your neighborhood. So if you got a digital billboard, a digital board, put it up there. Take pride in your neighborhood. We're here to make a difference. We're here to stop the illegal dumping. And we're here just to give our citizens a big party and reward them for their efforts. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
A quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, when y'all went through and did the sweep this last one?
Yes, ma'am.
And then code enforcement went back to do the enforcement side of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Was there a law that they had to still address?
No. Because we're trying to do a change of attitude and let our citizens know that code enforcement is not a once-a-year deal. It's a daily deal. And we are trying to change their attitude. We did have some violations there. I don't have the exact number, because I knew you was going to ask that question. Not for real. But we have gone back, and we are addressing those junk vehicles that are there and the other violations. Yes, ma'am?
Darlene, could you real quickly tell us what you told me about the car, the vehicles on the, on the, on their lot yard, about the taking picture, the solution?
Oh, okay.
Because we all got the letter.
Y'all all got the letter? Uh, yeah. Marita and I met with Councilwoman Dean this morning, and her question was about front yard parking. One of the things is that we need to see it when we go out. If it's not there, then it's hard for us to address. So we have to have some proof in order to be able to say, yes, it's there, or to go out and visit with the property owner. One of the things that we have done, and that we have done in the past, and we're doing, if the neighbor takes a picture and send it to us, then that's one of those proofs that the vehicle is parking there. We will then get with our legal department in order to address that. But at least it gives us some leverage that we can say, yes, it's there. We got to complain that you're parking, you're doing front yard parking. That's a no-no within the city. They say, how you know? I got a picture.
And I thought that was really good to know, because the, the occurrences usually happen at night, so they don't see them. This is something that could be done.
Now, they have to put, they can park on their side yard. We're talking about front yard parking.
Side yard, what do you?
Okay, on the side of your house?
Mm-hmm.
They can actually pull a vehicle, or you can pull a vehicle there on the side of, of your property, and you don't have to have it on a paved surface.
Okay.
You, on the front yard, it has to be paved.
So on the front side of your yard, they can?
Anywhere on the front yard that's considered front yard.
And they can.
They, unless it's paved.
Right. Then that's really from the front of the house to the curb.
Right.
On the side.
Does that include motorcycles and everything else?
Yes, that's all of it.
He thinks it's a piece of vehicle.
That's all of it. So if they pull next to the side window, we can't touch it.
Okay.
But if they pull anywhere across their front yard, and it's not a paved surface, we can write them out.
If it cranks, anything that cranks, it's considered?
Or should have, in its old days.
Right. Must design to crank.
Well, then it goes to junk. If the junk, or the junk that doesn't crank.
And on that list that you have here, it has code, common code violations that are on there. They're both in English and Spanish. And so if you have any questions, feel free to call us. We'll try to address whatever we can. If not, we'll find the right people to do it.
Well, my wife has become a app junkie. Anybody that's grass is overgrown, she takes that app and goes down the street. And y'all do a fantastic job of hitting them out. Usually, within a week, it's done.
Yes.
And then she's not grabbing at me, so I really appreciate that.
Our code officers are very efficient. Any other questions for us?
I'd just like to thank you guys for doing such a great job, both of you. And I really enjoyed the, like, block party that I went to. It was so much going on. It was just, ooh. So I think the communities appreciate you.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you both.
One thing that you didn't hit on, all the networking partnerships that you're establishing. So I think that's an important part of what we're trying to do.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. I was just kind of looking at the time. Okay.
You're good, you're good.
Okay. The network and the partnership that we're developing, we're developing partnership in-house, as well as outside the city. Atmos, Ector County, Encore. Encore has even stepped in and say, we'll provide for a portion of the food on July. So just hint, hint, if you know anybody else that want to provide for some food in July sweep, we, we... That's what I'm talking about, ask. You have not, because you asked me. And so, okay. But anyway, our partnerships consist of, we're getting, we're formulating a list of all, a database of all of our churches within our community, because we're going to go to our churches and talk to all of the pastors. When you can get the pastors on board, you can get the congregation on board. And so we'll be going, we will be going to church services that will allow us to come in, and I don't mind talking. I, I don't have a problem talking. I'm really shy.
No, sir.
I'm very bashful, but I don't have a problem of asking. And, and letting them know what the ordinances are. We're going to the civic organizations. We, YPO, I was at Rotary. I was at Rotary, I've been to Rotary, OPD, Neighborhood Watch, COP, Citizens on Patrol. We're going all around, talking to anybody and everybody that will let us talk to them. We just tell them, we just are nobody, trying to tell everybody about something that is going on in our city that will make a difference. So we're forming partnerships, Halliburton and Beaton and Bow, and, yeah, we, with the help of Michael and Philip and Marita, and any y'all that want to help, I'm just saying. We'll go talk to whoever we need to talk to, to form a partnership, because it takes a village. It takes every one of us. It's not just one council district, but it's in our, our entire city that we need to make a difference.